Plenipotentiary allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undeniably indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sure. President Reese?
Here.
Vice President Mitchell?
Here.
Treasurer Delisandro?
Here.
Secretary Steppich here. Trustee Brasingen?
Here.
Trustee Schwa?
Here.
Trustee Schuman?
Here.
I think there's one item on the agenda to approve the consent agenda from last night.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Support.
Dan. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
She carries. We're just waiting for our candidate to come downstairs here, so he'll be here shortly and we will begin. Rod?
Hi, Jim.
Smiling tonight.
It's my happy saying you're telling jokes, we'll wait for the candidate.
He comes down in the room soon. Yeah. Make a deal at ease.
Maybe I have trumpets or something. Jim?
I can cover this. If you haven't seen, there's some of these forms in the back if you have questions. We're not actually looking for who you think we should appoint, but if you have concerns or questions or anything about the candidates after hearing the interviews, if there's time at the end, Mike Wilmot, who's upstairs getting Mr. Palmer, will take these from you and he'll submit them to the board so we can ask those at the end of the interview. There's planned 90 minutes for each interview. I'm gonna wait till Mr. Palmer gets down with some of his supplies himself.
Hello, everybody. Thanks for coming out on a cold, nasty night. So the big question is, will it be school tomorrow? First question I have. I hope my text message is on the way down already.
Is anticipated 24 below zero? Do you call school tomorrow?
Can I sit in Ohio State? Why do I come to this side?
We all do.
So. Don't touch me with that.
For those of you that don't know, this is Mr. Thomas Palmer. He's currently the superintendent of Basser and Millington Community Schools. We're gonna have a format. You've already met the board members here, Mr. Palmer. It will take about 90 minutes for your interview, give or take. 25 to 30 questions. Towards the end of the interview, you can ask the board questions if you have any and as long as it's not about math or anything like that. We'll have an opportunity for you to give a closing statement after the interview. And Mr. Wilmot here is gonna keep track of time. If we start going too long on questions, I know he'll move along a little bit. As far as filling out the, I already discussed, the forms that they could fill out. You'll collect those, Mike, and give them to us. So I'm gonna start right now if you're ready. And the board has had an opportunity to look at your resume, but the audience does not. If you could briefly just review your background and tell us what causes you to be interested in the superintendent position in Oxford at this point here.
Certainly. Born and raised in Allen, Michigan. My father was a community education recreation director there. My mother was a teacher. Went to Central Michigan University, graduated there with a teaching degree. From there, I went to, started out with Claire, teaching actually adult education my first year. I went to Greenville Public Schools where I was for five years. When I started having kids, got married and had kids, and opted at that time to jump into administration. Got my masters from Central Michigan University. And I took my first administrative position in Eskenada. Might as well been in Wisconsin. I'm a diehard Lions fan and doesn't mix well in that's Packer country up there. I was up there for just one year and got my opportunity to go to Baddex to be the high school principal. So I moved over to Baddex and was there for five years. Superintendent retired. My wife and I decided to make another move. We moved up to a bigger district, Fremont Public Schools. I was high school principal and later, the last year I was their assistant superintendent. Then I got a super tenancy, went over to Basser Public School. They've been there for the last seven years. And what happened about a year and a half ago now, I got a call from Millington School Superintendent, who was just there doing an interim job for them. They had some issues and the gentleman left in the middle of the year. He called me with a question as far as, would I be interested in helping him out? Because he had just been diagnosed with Parkinson's and had stepped out. So I talked to my board about it, being that we were in a financial crunch. I said this could be a very strong way to save some money for both districts and give Millington opportunity to go through and do the proper search if they'd like to do. So we agreed to do this for a first semester. Went fine. There was some stumbling blocks in the beginning because there were two very big rivals. A whole other story in itself. The people thought we were taking each other over and things like that. But we got through that hump and it's worked. Actually, it's worked pretty good. There's definitely been stumbling blocks along the way, but it has worked. So we agreed to do it for one more year to give them a full year to really do a complete thorough search. We are not doing it anymore at the end of this year. Partly because I said, okay, enough's enough. It's very time consuming. Is it doable? Yes, it's doable because they took, continue to do it. Their purpose was to get a new superintendent. We've saved some good money. We were able to put money back and go fund balances and continue to grow those back up to where they should be. So back to 10 percent. That's kind of the process that took place with that particular thing. So I'll be back in Basser alone at the end of this year, June 30th. Why am I here today? Well, I have two sons who are both at Central Michigan University, on mom and dad's footsteps. And I do have a dog with the whole, who's only in seventh grade. And at some point in time, I always promised my wife that we would get back towards her hometown, which is Rochester, Michigan. So when this popped up on the grid, she got very excited. Told me what I was going to do in the beginning, which we'd already known in the past. But it's an opportunity for really me to make the next, move the next step up in my career. Obviously, we're in a much larger district. And I'll be honest with you, I'm surprised I'm sitting here because being in such a progressive district and everything, I knew you were gonna get the cream of the crop. But I know that crop is not as strong as it has been in the past years. People don't want these jobs anymore. It's become a political nightmare, so to speak, in a lot of resumes in a lot of cases. So I was very excited, but then I got the phone call Monday, and then he told me it was tomorrow night. And I said, that's not much of a turnaround to get ready for an interview process. And I said, hey, that's fine. We'll come in and give you our best shot. My wife is very excited right now about the possibility of coming to Oxford Community Schools. I won't say my daughter is about being told, but she'd be just fine. And the opportunities for here to hear are obviously much greater than the opportunities she's gonna get there. I can go on and on about some things, but I'm sure they're gonna come up later on in the year. That's what brings me here right now.
Just so you know, each of us will take turns asking questions. So some of us will be writing, but you know, we're paying attention to it. Given what you know about our school district, could you tell us what you believe are the most immediately, immediate challenges you face?
Well, you know, it's, didn't have a lot of time. I was really lucky and do a lot of in-depth research like I kinda liked to do. But I pulled a couple of things last night at the end of it. One is your, obviously, your plan that you have to put out every year, your annual report. I pulled off your district annual, complete district annual report. And I also took a look at your contract. So I was very interested, obviously, in your IP school. Took a lot of those things. Took a look at where your enrollment's going. You had a huge growth spurt when you implemented a couple of programs a few years back, which was obviously your orchestra program, which is K-12, something talked about in the state, this financial climate that's out there. And your foreign language program in K-12, and the idea that kids can be proficient by the time they're in eighth grade. That's impressive. So you're so short on that. Very few districts can do it. I think the key moving forward here that I see is going to be how do you maintain those programs? You have something that very few school districts in this state are out there, not anywhere in the country because of financial concern. Your, when I look at sheer fund balance, your safe fund balance, you're not, you know, you're not loaning anybody out of water with it. It's a fund balance that can be gone in a two or three-year period, 10 percent. But you've done a very good job of managing that throughout the years. But you've had some major growth, which actually, which helps you to manage that fund balance. Now, how do you flatten it out? Which has been happening eventually. Last year, I think I saw you actually lost five or six kids. So the challenge coming up over the next three or four years that I see right now for Oxford Schools is gonna be, how do we manage that financial issue out there to maintain the current level of program that we have here in the district? And how do we keep these programs, keep these school choice kids coming to Oxford instead of Lake Orioles or Rochester's? And we have a lot of very nice school districts around. We've done a great job of doing that. Kudos to your past superintendent and your current administrative staff because they're doing some really neat things. They will do swing and make this swing. So it's gonna come down to, how do we look at, how do we recognize alternative funding streams that are out there? How do we come up with, you know, whether it's cutback and then look at shared service ideas, things like that? Right now, you're not in that vote that I can see, but when you put the numbers together and you print the numbers and take a look at what's going on, you're at the bottom, your foundation allowance, you're at the bottom just like all school districts in the state. That surprised me. I didn't expect that when I saw that. So when I look at that, performance funding's gone next year. Just cut that out. So realistically, you're probably looking at getting a cut in money next year rather than an increase. You know, you stayed 70 bucks. You lose performance funding and you lose on top of that majority of your, lost the name of it, 50 bucks we get for doing this.
Best practice.
Best practice, thank you. Lost the. And they're cutting the heck out of their best practice. It's probably the best case scenario is we're gonna be held about the same funding we are right now. We don't know, there's a lot of other question marks that stand out there right now. You don't know what's gonna happen with this vote that's coming up on the road tax. If that passes, will we give them extra money? If it doesn't, is he gonna, are you angry and take it out on the school districts and cut us? Lot of question marks. So to me, it's about how do we maintain our current level of program here in Oxford Schools and continue to move those forward? Because I had an interesting conversation, I thought it was really nice that you brought in some students to talk because if you want honesty, you get it from the kids. And one of their concerns was, how do they make, grow your current program, your baccalaureate program here? They would like to see more options, more kids coming in from different countries too. And like I told them, I said, really, look, Reed, your current superintendent administration, they've started that process. You got the process going with Mexico right now. And I'm sure eventually the goal would be to extend that out into other countries. Because the more global you can get and more experiences and these kids can get in these different cultures, that's the whole purpose of why you started the program, to begin to grow these kids and grow their experiences so that they can grow on that global economic adventure of themselves. So here, guys, prepare for the long future. That to me is your number one concern. How do we maintain these things? I did that probably a long ways for compensation. There's a lot that's said on that issue.
My final question, what specific capabilities and qualities would you bring to this position that would set you apart from the other candidates?
Well, I, you know, I think, number one, as I look at this, I get excited about, number one, is that programming issue. You know, how do we expand on the current program that you got? That'll be one. Two, I spent the last seven years trying to maintain program in a very small K-12 district. Not very small, but we have a district of about 1,300 kids. In the last year and a half, in two districts of about 1,300, 1,400 kids. So how do you get creative, find those funding streams that are out there and are available to be able to manipulate those so that you can continue to offer programs at the level which you're continuing, that you're currently offering those? And with hopes down the line to grow those programs? And that's really where I come in. There are many different ways to do that. I can sit here and talk to you all evening to model, whether it's working with some partnerships that are out there, working with some shared service ideas, working with, you know, enrollment type of things as far as what are we, what are we gonna do with our enrollment in order to maintain these things? Something, at some point in time, down the road, something has to give. So what are we gonna be able to maintain? What are we not gonna be able to maintain? We're gonna take, we need to come in, the first thing to do, to me, what I would do is take a look and see, sit down with the board, the administration, say, what's going on down the road? What are we really foresee happening down the road? And create that five-year plan that prepares us for the worst-case scenario. Because I think in today's financial venue that's out there, education especially, you have to prepare for the worst. Because as we found out five years ago, there are scenarios that are worse than we ever thought. It happens before. So if you're not prepared for them, you get in some good trouble pretty soon when you step in the council plan. Governor's sending people to come in and take over your district. You don't want things like that to happen. We want to continue to be a leader in the state of Michigan, not just in Oakdale, but in the state of Michigan, like we're doing right now, how we maintain that leadership role.
Thank you. And now, we have some questions from Secretary Steppich.
Thank you, President. We have a little bit bigger community than you have there. So I'm wondering how specifically, so I'm wondering how specifically you would go about establishing and maintaining a positive relationship with the community?
Well, I think you're vigilant, you gotta be out there. It brings me back to what one of the kids had said earlier to me, I had to ask. We wanna know you. We wanna be able to see you. And that's being at functions. Joining the Rotary Clubs, being part of Chamber, Congressman Communities, being at activities, being at things. It's never been a problem for me because I've had kids actively involved. That makes it so much easier to go to the football games time and time again when your kids, old kids are playing, things like that. But it's the other activities too. That's, kids need to know, need to be able to recognize. Okay, I told Dennis, you got 5,200 kids here. They're not all gonna know, be able to talk to me on a one-on-one basis. What they should be able to do is, when I walk down the hall and someone asks, who is that? Or they see me at the grocery store, they see me at the local restaurants or whatever, and somebody asks, who is that? I really hope the teachers, especially the students themselves, can say, well, that's the superintendent. That's what's important.
Can you share with us in which way you have accomplished successful communications with the community regarding district problems or accomplishments that you've had, specific ways?
Well, you know, you have all your classic venues, which today, number one, is obviously your eminent service. And you have your local papers, things along that line. The problem is getting people out to events. You'd love to sit here and say, oh, we have an open houses and things like that. It's hard, especially in rural communities, and I'm sure even now, people, the way the workload is and family life these days, to get people to come to events. So how you, the question really is, how do you get out there and do advertise and to promote these type of events to get people to come to them? Because we can, I can throw an open house, I can throw some type of community forum event, things along that line, but if we don't get the information out in a proper manner that works for the community, then they're not gonna come. And then they have to see, first of all, the relevance of it. So it's how do we get that relevant factor out there to these individuals to show them, there's a need, we want your, we need your input. Otherwise, they're gonna say, I have other things I can do. Or, you know, they're not gonna listen to me anyways, so to speak. So showing them that they're part of that, you have a facilities plan that you have, not only stakeholders in the community, but just regular community members be part of those type of things. When you're putting together those five and 10-year plans, whether it's facilities, the educational issues, so on and so forth, as we go down the line of all the different things that we can do, it's getting those people actively involved in those type of work so that they can be involved. You know, district school improvement, let's get, let's not get one or two people from the community. Let's get some serious stakeholders from the community, and some parents, and moms, and dads that really want to be actively involved in these things and get on on these committees.
Can you give us some examples of community activities in which you've been in, acted, participated in, or was leadership of? And how, in what ways that benefited your district?
Well, the first thing I did was I joined Rotary, been president of Rotary. And then, how does that benefit the community and the district for its students? Because it's kind of exactly what I'm just talking about. When the needs arise for the community, we helped out. The district is already there to say, okay, we have the facilities for use for these events. Let's get people in the buildings. Here's a great way to get people in the buildings. We're gonna run an auction for Rotary to raise money. We're gonna run one of these art shows, whatever they may be. Let's use, let's use our facilities for that. I think it's very important to get as many people from the community into our facility to see what they have because when it comes time for a need for facilities restructuring, they know the need. They've seen the need firsthand. And they know that we can use those facilities when we need to use them. There are limits to that. We understand that too. But the bottom line is, how do we get those people into those facilities? Rotary was one I've been actively involved with. I worked with the Chamber. I'm not a member of Chamber there, but we meet, I meet with them when they need things. I'm actively involved, things along that line. I've met with Lions Club before. Can't be a member of everything, unfortunately. And I do have a family like too, but you have to be out there and involved and actively working with those different groups. And try to be a member of at least one or two on a regular basis to get out there and support out there.
Thank you.
That's it for you. Trustee Swag?
He's down for the night?
He's done, you can go now.
What do you think is the most important educational policy challenge facing district like ours today?
Well, they just threw us a curveball. I think it's the one right now with changing the inst, to this instep, which just threw the scores right off the, right off the grid for everybody. So now, there's no way to compare and do bases, all the things they're gonna do, so they put hiatus on all that. No more school report grades and stuff for a couple, two, three years. They don't know, because they don't know what they're gonna do right now. Threw a big curveball at student bodies, with change from the ACT to the SAT. That's a huge, gonna be a huge challenge for everybody right now in the educational industry. And probably overseas, even the financial one, that's up there. Because you always have this looming issue of what's gonna happen with funding. And I think I talked a little bit about the other one I truly believe is how do we maintain our program down the road.
What impact do you feel the Michigan Department of Education designation of focus schools is having on Michigan's school districts in general?
Well, I have an elementary school that is a focus school, and they will always be a focus school. They, if you have a very, very low social economic stance, you are gonna be, at some point in time, a focus school. Said this from day one, as a group of super tenants in state of Michigan. They calibrated this thing completely wrong. They had a bar, they had everything in place to do this correctly because they had that bar already set for accreditation. Here's what you have to be. Here's the level you have to be in order to be considered accredited or to achieve a level. It was already there. It was already there for the meat and all that stuff. So instead of basing everything off in that level, they said, no, we're gonna take the whole gamut from the top to bottom. Well, what's the problem at the top of that? It's always moving as a whole. So as you move up, you're, if you're in the bottom 5 percent, how are you ever gonna get out of the bottom 5 percent? Because everybody's going up. So you may show tremendous strides, but everybody else is gonna be out there working towards the same goals. So your odds of getting out of that 5 percent are slim enough. Because unless your entire social economics or your community are gonna change overnight, it's just not going to happen down there. So how do I think the focus school thing has really affected? To me, I'll be honest with you, I think it's done. It's done anything good for state of Michigan. Priority school issue is kind of the same today. I'll probably jump a little ahead of you on the question here. To me, this one's even worse because what's happened? They had four indicators where they set the goal for priority school. Your GAD, which is your graduation drop-off rate, your actual test scores, how you do from a testing perspective, your 30 percent, which is your focus schools, that 30 percent difference. And then they had the fourth one, which is, well, it really just threw everybody out of whack, and that is a four-year trend. So here was the problem. If you had an average achievement level that's putzing along this line for more than two or three years, then you get a class that came through and they did really well on the meat fest, or the instep now, you get a spike. So what happens, three and a half time, you're a reward school. Yay, you're a reward school. I've taken two high schools in two different districts to become reward schools. Here's the problem with that though. Next time, next, if in two years, the next couple of classes are back down along that same baseline, your trend line goes down, that throws you into being a priority school. That's what's frustrating for all the supes and the principals out there right now in state is the way they've set these things up are, you've set people up for failure. The worst thing that can happen to these line of districts is you look at the percentages of districts out there that were reward schools, a very high percentage within two to three years became priority schools.
What has been the most unpopular administrative decision you have had to make? And how did you handle the reaction to the decision?
Well, let's see. I had to cut 50 percent of the teaching staff in Basser Public Schools over a three-year period. And it was a staff that had never laid off a teacher since the 1980s and were surviving. The toughest decisions are those that accomplish jobs, the ones that jobs. Because these are people, for the most part, that live in your communities. A lot of times, if you open your communities, so how do you manage decline, financial decline? There's one way, and it's, because 85 percent of our budgets on average are tied up in payroll, you're gonna have to cut some point in time for this now. Managing that financial decline is the toughest decision, I think, in superintendent that has to be made in the state of Michigan because it's gonna cost somebody a job. Or in a lot of most cases, jobs. So how do you do that? Number one, you have to put out there as much information as you can. You have to meet with your teaching staffs, meet with the boards, meet with the community. Let them know, here's where we're at, here's why we're at. It's an informational piece. I had many, many meetings. Teachers get tired of it after a while because doom and gloom, loss, I mean. But it's information they need to know. They need to understand why these things are happening. If people understand why they're happening, then it takes the onus more so off the district as a whole and puts it where it needs to go, which is down in Lansing. These things happen because of budget decisions that happen down there in Lansing, coupled with, obviously, not everything is under control, the economy, things like that. But those are the toughest decisions that I think one has to make. You do it by making sure that they understand what the process is and why, why we're in a position where we're at.
Thank you.
You're next.
Could you describe your typical style of leading and talk about situations in which you might vary from that style?
I'm a firm believer, first of all, in that, I'm gonna put this in the best words possible, Jim, that as an individual, it's my job to obviously manage the district, okay, as a superintendent. There are people that I've hired, or that somebody had hired anyways, building principals and administrators and teachers, parapros, maintenance, bus drivers. They are also being paid to do a job. And I think my role is to, any administrator or program that has worked with me will tell you this, is to make sure that they have what they need to do to be successful in that position. position. I'm not a dictator, I don't believe in it. I think that has, that should be the case in any aspect of the workplace, truthfully. You want to feed the flyers, so to speak. You hire people, we put people in positions because we know and feel they can do the job. Then, if they're not doing the job, that's where the bad part comes in, that's the thing, but it's my role to make sure that we have somebody in there doing the position, they can do it, do it correctly, okay? I'm not, I don't come in, and I'm not going to manage at the point where it's a dictatorship, so to speak. I'm not going to go out and tell people, this is how I want it, how I want things done, this direction. Because I think everybody has to have their own creative and personality that comes out in what they do. That being said, there are times where that has to be done. There are things that are being dictated, whether it be because of law, contractual issues, because of barry units, whatever it may be, where sometimes we have to say, no, this is the way, this is what has to be done, to make sure it gets done. But I think for the most part, most of those things can be handled from the decision-making process, based on what those individuals' needs are, and it's my role to make sure that they can be successful and have any need in what they need. And we might hope that the principals work the same way.
Can you please describe the strategic planning process you're most comfortable with using, and share any evidence that you have that the process has been successful?
Well, when you look at strategic planning processes, there's, obviously, everybody has their own personal way and their own little venues that they put into it, I think it's a rule of your personality comes along. But I think first of all, you've got to have your stakeholders involved. I've had strategic processes for some facilities, we create fine-tuned plans, you've got to have the stakeholders that have done it for budget, I'm not a person that's going to dictate how the budget's going to be, and sit down with those people involved, principals. Department has things like that, and we're going to talk about what their needs are, and then we're going to come to a consensus on that. We're going to build that plan around what everybody can typically agree to, to the extent that that the position allows in that sense. So we're going to put it down, it's going to be paper, we're going to have so many goals that are going to be set up, we're going to have objectives for those goals, guidelines for those things, looking forward. Those plans are living documents that I think you have some people to look at and go over on whether it depends on what it is, could be a yearly thing, or it could be a monthly thing, that you're looking at, depending on what type of the plan you're putting together, for what purpose. And I think you have to look at stakeholders and creationists. And that's up for any one person to put down, and go with it. Taste the fun out of it, in a sense too. Nobody likes to just be out there just doing whatever else tells them to do, on a constant basis.
Can you, what are some examples of how you have used data and research to make important decisions in your current position?
Well, I think, one way I'm going to go right back to finances, you've got to take a look and see what your enrollments are doing, what you're, what you're going to project out, and when we create budgets, we're, it's our best guess to know this. We don't know exactly what our enrollments are going to be, we don't know exactly anymore what the government's going to give us, and we have to produce that budget before we even know that, those things. So you, there's all, you've got to look at the data there to see what that shows. Obviously, the most important one, other than that, is obviously the student achievement. You've got to look and work with the people in place, make sure that there's a plan in place, that your principals are working with your curriculum people, are working with the teachers, to ensure that they are making curriculum decisions for our kids based on the data that, and how that recently disseminated breaks down. What's our best scenario that's out there? We have, the government now has actually set us up with two wonderful things for doing that, with my, you know, my school data program that's out there online, you can really take a look at that, and you can disseminate that. It doesn't cost, you spend a lot of money on those programs. We don't need to do that anymore, because we'll, 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 one positive end of the conversation, and we all have, either I think, Gergens, Newt, Truax here, also for finance. And the wonderful thing about all those two things, I don't think it helps us as a whole to get at least those snapshot pictures that we constantly have to take, but it also helps the community to take a look at where we're at right now, so that they can see too, our information's out there, and we've done a nice job. We have a great website that really puts that data out there for the individuals to take a look at.
And my last one, what are the key practices needed to establish and maintain a good working relationship with the board, parents, and members of the business community?
Communication, communication. I don't know, central, anybody I think can put that. You need to know what's going on, nobody, I tell all my administrators this, when I first sit down, I say, the last thing in the world you want to have happen is you walk into the grocery store, walk into the store, and someone grabs you and asks you, what happened to so-and-so? Or what happened with this thing? And you don't have a clue what they're talking about, because somebody didn't inform you until they, I don't want that to happen to you, I don't want it to happen to me, and school board members don't want it to happen to them. You want to find out about this thing, when someone comes up to you, at least you can say, yes, I know what you're talking about, because you can't, a lot of times they ask questions, you can't talk, a lot of times sleep. But we're aware of that, and superintendent, principal, whoever's there in care. You need to have that line of communication, you need to be sitting down talking on a regular basis, so that we are all on the same, same plane, and you know what's going on. Principal's going on, I know what's going on, teachers know what's going on, it's multiple lines of communication.
Trustee Gergens.
Could you give us some examples of educational change or reform that you've initiated that improved success for our students?
Yeah, you know, one thing I really agree with this governor, and there are things I like about him, and things I don't, as any educator will tell you, but one thing I've really agreed, I've really enjoyed, the money he's stuck into preschool programs, pre-k programs, okay? When you look at your, especially your lower socioeconomic and poverty type, and you, Oxford will have that here, take a look, and it's one of the areas that we looked at really hard here, because the scores on those aren't good, but they're not anywhere. But that's, that's an area to look at. When you look at those type of things, and stuff, I decided that we, our kids are not coming kindergarten ready. So I grew an existing GSRP program, GSRP readiness, some people refer to as B4K, state-run program, from a section to three sections, okay? I went out and we started out by creating a preschool program of our own, a three-year-old program. Problem was, it was just too expensive, it was costing the district money, you can't, it's tough to make money. So we switched it over to a latchkey program, so that these kids have a place to go at six o'clock in the morning before school, and they can stay until six o'clock, maybe their parents get out, and it was a learning environment program. We took the GSRP program and instituted it into a latchkey program, so it was a continuous learning program for the kids. And then I also went out and got ACAP to bring in a head start program into the district for three-year-olds, so they had a daily program to do it to. And then when I went to Millington, this person was starting working on over at Millington too. They had some assemblies once again in the program, a lot of districts do, some don't have it at all, surprisingly enough. But those are programs that are aimed obviously at lower socioeconomic, and a lot of people don't realize is, anybody can go to a GSRP program, you just have to pay a fee, you don't need the requirements for income, and that fee is cheap, and it's like 50 bucks a semester, you know? All of a sudden, it's like, whoa, you know, I didn't realize that. So once again, it's that about that communication issue about being out about the programs out there. I think that is a program that just made leaps and bounds, and we started looking at test scores after the first couple of years, and we're just starting the last year of getting that data showing up in second, third grade on these tests, that it really made a difference in helping these kids out, especially on that lower end. So that would be one, a program that I think is a good program, that we come up with. Other programs. I've got to figure out which one I want to go first. I think when you look at the financial, and using, creating programs that are out there that are more readily accessible, not only for community people, but also for boards that can more easily understand and read what budgetary things are, really hard on putting together something a little bit different. Because when it comes to school finance, the State of Michigan dropped the ball years and years ago, it's the most confusing thing to understand for anybody to understand in the world. If you don't work with it on a daily basis, you're not going to get it. How do we get reports and stuff out there that are more legible, accessible to the average Joe who doesn't work with it on a daily basis? I had a business manager that sat down with me, and she did a very nice job putting that together for us, and it really changed the dynamic, so that you could understand what it was they were looking at for changes, but I have to ask tons and tons of questions at that. We created a teacher service center two years ago at Bassett Public Schools, which is a really interesting thing, a curriculum person works with the teachers during the prep time, the teachers get with the prep time, go down to the teacher center, and work on initiatives for improving instruction in the classroom. There was some kickback at first by some teachers, but those teachers that really enjoyed it, then it starts to grow, so that, you know, it's really started growing. Now it's to the point where, that's a busy room throughout the day, the teachers go down there, they work in groups, they look at different teaching strategies, look at different, they study the data, whether down there, figure out what's going on, they can talk about what's happening in their classes, they're talking about students that come up, one of the most powerful things I think that ever came out of education was the old men's school concept, that became too expensive for a lot of schools to continue to afford it. We had that common prep time where teachers could talk with each other about individuals and what happened, whether they were finding out that Joey was a problem child, but he was only a problem child in a couple of classes, well, why isn't he a problem child in this class? Because of the strategy that teacher has. It gives them, it gives them the ability to talk with their peers more so about different things that are going on, and all the kids in the classroom are more enlightened.
Thank you. Please describe your experience in dealing with both low incidence and high incidence special education students.
I think what we're talking about right now is another area of crisis in the United When that idea first came out, it was a great idea. Problem was, it was another, a very, part of the largest unemployment mandate of public education ever received from the federal government. So now we're stuck with trying to educate kids at a regular level to save a lot of money that we have for our regular education kids, but that costs as much as three or four times as much money. So when we look at the difference between the two, and I'm guessing what you're referring to here is a difference in, from just maybe like an LD student in a couple of classes to the autistic student, okay, out there. There's a big debate that's going on about mainstream issue, because we switched everything over here in State of Michigan, you'd have to mainstream these kids. And it has become a very tough crux on a lot of teachers, trying to determine how they're going to work with these individuals on a regular basis, when they take so much time away from the rest of the class and the rest of the kids. And I think really, what we have done is, we have a lot of title money, probably more so than what you get here. I don't know, because I haven't had a chance really to look to see, but we've used that title money to do setup interventions in schools, so that some of these kids can get a holdout of these classes, and get more one-on-one help with these individuals, shared throughout the day, which you can't just leave the kid in there without letting the kids know. The philosophy is that they will do better because they have the stronger kids around them. Yes, to some extent, that's true, but at some point in time, the other kids start to suffer. And so we look at that, how do we maintain both, protect both these populations? And that, it takes time and money, that's how you add these things in there, such as philosophy with the kids. In the elementary, went to a whole new program where they do camps, and kids are actually, throughout the day, go to their different camps based on their achievement levels. So even though a student may be in third grade, he may wind up going to a fifth grade camp because he's achieved higher, it's able, it's enabled us to take some more accelerated kids number one, because those are the kids a lot of times get left behind, and still work with those individuals and help them move along without costing the district a lot of money. It's one of those funding streaks that kind of talking about, where you can get creative out there. And it also has helped with, and vice versa, some lower level kids, whether it be a fifth grade kid going down, back down to a third grade camp, it's more his level to help him learn these things. Those are the type of things you have to be creative with, with these individuals. Hopefully the ISD helps out, I mean, that's a big one too, where ISD's been into play, and they hold the cards when it comes to special education fund, that's where a lot of the funding is. And I hope that this ISD works hand-handed, and knowing your superintendent here, she's done a very nice job with her program and stuff like that, for the district, sure.
How would you go about evaluating the effectiveness of curriculum, teaching methods, assessments used, like at Bassett? How do you know something's working? How do you know something's not?
You know, it's interesting, because going through the different processes that we have before, one of the things we are learning is that complacency is not a good thing. In a small community, what happens is, those people come and rejoin that community and sort of untouchable no matter what job they're doing. So we have, I've got a new high school principal now, it's my, another one I've been with for years, retired, and he's kind of attacked that issue, so to speak, and I think in a positive way. But you've really got to take a look at, one, the data, you've got to, Teacher Collaborations Center is a wonderful tool for that, because they're in there crunching that data, looking at those kids on an individual basis. Now, as a class level, or like the state does, look at the class of 92 versus the class of 93, which is totally relevant, because, just because the scores have dropped, as you know, it doesn't mean that their scores dropped, their scores could go up, you know, 100 points or so, but you're not comparing that with that. So you get it, and you're actually comparing students with that same student scores across two or three-year period, across curriculums, things along that line. And it's, it takes those, right down to the nitty-gritty of having the time, give those teachers to really look at that data and disseminate that data with the help, they're going to have the help to do it, and disseminate the data, they don't have the time to do all that. So if they get hold of that data, and someone can show them that data, give it to them, then they can do some wonderful things with those kids as far as different instruction practices in that class, you can help those develop.
Have you had any experience with international backdoor programs?
No, I have not, except for when I've read a lot online, and seen everything. Wonderful program you have going here, I think I say, it's, as long as you can continue to grow it, I think, you know, it's obviously going to be a huge plus for this community and the area, and student body especially. And that's what we're all about. How do we expose those students to a more global world? Because, like you say, we're out there, I've got a brother who lived ten years in Hong Kong, worked for Gil Packard, moved to Hong Kong, got on a whim, quit his job, and for ten years, just did odd jobs for companies, making good money doing these things, for what skills he had, and really saw, comes back and talks to me about, you know, the need for these type of programming and stuff like that for these kids, because he went over there first and it's quite lost, you know, things are quite a bit different. And, but intermingled, and one of the interesting facts that I got from the kids was, talking to the kids earlier, was their concern was that they feel, I don't know now if this is true, but I mean, they feel as all these, especially the kids from China when they come over, because there's so many of them, they split group together, and so they don't get to mingle as much amongst the other kids, and so that would be something to look at here, I think, would be, how do we get those kids more spread out to interact more with more, a larger population of that, if that's what is, you know, happening? But it's so new right now, I'm sure those are things that you're going to learn as you go through the growing pains of having a program, having that many kids come in and grow it.
Have you done any reading or any experiences with global education initiatives and programs?
You know, yeah, you take a look, and you try to improve it, and implement as many things as you can in these small communities with what you have as far as resources. That's the biggest problem, is getting the resources. Obviously, the internet is the number one resource for being able to expand on those programs, and getting things such as a distance learning program, with even a China, or Germany, or something like that. So those are the types of programs that smaller districts look at, as well as languages, getting, you know, other than offering Spanish, which is what everybody offers, how do we bring German, French, Chinese, or one of their biggest ones right now, Arabic, out there, get these kids exposed to these things. They don't, one of the things I've learned from my brothers, they don't need to necessarily be able to speak the language fluently, they just need to be able to understand the nuances of the language, and the different cultural expectants in these different cultures, because everyone speaks English, okay? You go over there, like he said, he said, I had no problem going over to that, and everyone spoke English. He said, the problem was, the news and don'ts, because I'm not culturally aware of He said, the problem was the news and don'ts, because I'm not culturally aware of what's going on, and picking up on the dialects and the nuances of their cultures. And you do that through learning the basics of these different languages and being around these individuals. So that's what, you know, I called him last, I thought I was going over, I said, what do you think? You know, and he said, that's what he said, talking about this, you know? And I said, well, that makes a lot of sense from that perspective and that point. So those are the things really. So do I have a lot of space for this? Absolutely not. I don't. I wish I could say yes, because I'm not in a high priority in the districts that I've worked in. Love to learn and excited about the possibility of it, but, you know.
Thank you.
Do what we're standing for.
Describe your experience with budget development and financial management.
Well, I think we've been through that one quite a few, eh? A lot. Obviously, unfortunately, as Emma was saying, of trying to manage, you know, declining enrollment, declining finances for the last seven years. And that's what we've done. We've been able to man, making programs where other districts are outside now. I still led the full music programs in kindergarten through where nobody else around has that type of thing. So one thing I actually lost was I lost them the lower elementary art. Couldn't quite squeeze that in. We chose that to be gone because that was one thing that, it was easier for some of the teachers to do art in their classrooms and the lower L than it was to do music for them. And that was a decision that was made through the, from the, the teaching staff. One of the most important things with communication. But I think from a budget perspective, because I said it, as I looked at yours and looked down the road, my biggest concern would be to come up with an idea, plan of how we can maintain our budget with where it's at and maintain the program to the level it is and continue to grow.
In tough, why would you keep going back to the same, sorry?
Okay.
In tough financial times, how do you set priorities when there are competing interests, such as the need to implement programs for struggling students and also keep programs for gifted students?
And that's where those alternative funding streams come into play in a big way. You've got to get creative. There are grants, there's opportunities out there to do these. You get this, some of this money. Doesn't necessarily cover necessarily all the costs and things like that. So you have to tweak some things down the road to make them work. But that means, you know, I would say a very word, maybe down the road, you want to keep programming in play, we might have to raise class sizes a little bit. We may have to look at some alternative things with shared services a little bit. We may have to look at some of these alternative funding streams that are out there from perspectives of working with some of these other affiliations around here right now. We have a contract right now with the, is it Wisconsin Weyman or Wolf, Wolf?
Weyman.
I mean, Weyman.
Weyman.
Okay. You know, looking at, there's a group right now, they have a very big best initiative. Is there something else that we can work together with them to help cut our costs too? So it's about working collaboratively with your ISDs, your local districts around you, and your industries and things like that, come up with avenues to which we can create alternative funding streams to keep these programs alive and well and work with some of these other programs out there also. Creative use of title funds, creative use of ag risk funds. Your ag risk funds was a great thing, sure, because they create them up so we can use them for anything we wanted to. You know, the first federal government issue was always, supplant, a very word, initially, threw that right out. So there are ways and means to do some things. But there's also, at some point in time, comes that break even point where it's going to cost you something.
What ideas might you explore to raise money for the district? Have you had success in procuring additional funds for your current district?
Yeah, I think one of the biggest ones lately was I got into partnership with a group called Michigan Educational Partners. Everyone's heard about the online schools, and we have one here. And the online schools that come to your district and say, we can get you all your homeschool kids, we'll sign them up and you'll get ten percent, you don't have to do anything at all. Well, that was the biggest star of the world, because what happens is, you end up taking some of your kids and after three months it doesn't work, because online learning doesn't work for every kid. It doesn't work for every person, for every adult. Those kids wind up back in your district and you lost ninety percent of funding for them. So there's new, this is a very brand new concept that was out, there's a group that came out, this MAF as they're called. And group, and they got in and got a contract with the City of Detroit. Educating through Michigan Works programs and all these other programs, online offering online learning to all these homeless students that are out there. There are thirty-eight thousand homeless students in City of Detroit. But the company uses a fiduciary agent to run them through, so they run them through a couple of schools. Bassett Schools is one of them, another one is the Public Schools. And Ganderell Schools works with them also. And they run the schools, these kids through the districts. And we get ten percent of the money for those. For Bassett Schools, we're going to make close to two hundred thousand dollars in additional funding, which on our budget is a very large change to change. The sky's the limit as far as how many kids you want to take. It comes down to a couple of things. There's some safe things that we had to go past, such as, they couldn't count against us, with things such as legs, obviously, that hasn't been fixed. The biggest one was you didn't want to count next year, graduation drop already, your school park tire, things like that. And all those things, trying to take care of the workforce for good. That'd be the big one. That was a huge funding stream increase for us. Other things, obviously, are different grant opportunities out there. The state office, a lot of shared students, big shared services grant that came about last year and is going to happen again for next year. We find for that one also. Working with your ISDs, there are some ways and means and things that you can pick up some additional funding streams for what you're going to do those type of programs and things along that line. We work with the government with, and we educate those kids, and that's become a funding stream for us also that way. There are ways and means, it depends on how willing you are to go out there, search and find them out.
Describe the extent of your experience in managing facilities and district operations.
Well, managed for about seven years in Bassett, a year and a half in both, two districts. I mean, I had to manage a lot of enrollment decline, I had to manage a lot of budget area problems in those years. I had to do a lot of cutting in order to maintain a balanced budget. I think it's important in doing that that you work with your stakeholders, your principals, to your some teachers, your unions, unions are very important also. Your local districts, your districts around you. And everybody has to have some type of step and stakeholder in that, from your board or your doctor. Because if you don't, then the question started to arise is, well, why'd you do this? Why'd you do that? And where to keep those questions at bay. I guess the biggest thing to say is I survived cutting a staff from a hundred and nineteen teachers when I got there down to sixty-one teachers now. Administrator staff of twelve and a half administrators, I'm down to three. Sixteen bus runs, I'm down to eleven, I believe it is now. Maintenance, all that, we've had to cut, cut, cut in order to maintain these things. So normalize the word cut and stuff, but unfortunately, that was such a big drop-off that they experienced. They lost five hundred kids, the whole county of Tuscaloosa just lost a ton of, there were no jobs anymore. We were a big community, county that worked with SAG-Applause, Little Steerdeer Plan, which is now our next year. Thousands of jobs were lost there, a lot of them worked in Flint, we all know that, the Duke City event. There was this mass migration throughout the early two thousands and up till about two thousand and ten out of the county, where people were looking for jobs. Problem was, people that were looking for the jobs were the educated workforce, okay? They had the ability to leave. What happened was, those that didn't were left and moved to a county of extreme poverty. So we've had to manage a lot of different situations over the last seven years. Wish I could say more of them are positive, but...
What has been your experience in dealing with schools of choice programs? And what do you see as the advantages or disadvantages in these programs?
Schools of choice programs is related to, you're talking about just school choice kids, bringing them in?
Yes.
Yeah, I think it's wonderful to be a parent, to be able to choose one. I think it should have been like that all along, to be honest with you. It has caused schools, yes, the one can become more of a business, that would be a negative thing. Positive thing, it's also caused schools to really step up to the plate. In other words, we need to offer, we need to offer the best programming around that's going to draw our kids. Three things that people look for when they look for a school, number one, unfortunately, it's facilities, okay? Number two, it's programming, and number three is the teaching staff, the education grades, so on and so forth. That's what draws your parents in. So those are the things you really have to concentrate on and take a hard look at.
Thank you.
Senator Del Sandro.
Well, they do not seem to feel best for us, because this is a good story.
Are you last?
I'm last.
Wow, okay.
How would you hold individual school sites and central office staff accountable for results while improving district morale at the same time?
Well, number one, you have to celebrate those positives. A lot of districts, they don't do that. You see it time and time again, because it takes time and effort to do that. So how do you celebrate those? You put, you, there's just millions of different ways, you know? You put articles in the paper, you bring people to board meetings so that you, because I think you, you're the key to a lot of that celebration, I truly believe. They need to feel good about themselves, and if they're good about themselves, when the school board recognizes them, or they're proud of them, and things along that line. So I think that's, that's one of the many ways you can go out there and do that. Negative ways, those are always, those are always tough, and they're going to happen. You do that with communication. People need to understand why negative things happen, okay? Now, there's always going to be that portion, and it doesn't matter what you say, because they don't like it, they're not going to believe it, but in the end, the truth always wins out, okay? People really can argue to their own face, and those, the majority of those people will get that and they will understand it. And so I think that's all about communication. And both things are about communication, but there's still fun things you can do with the positive end of it, celebrations. All depending, any of the votes. The first thing they always ask, what's going to vote us? Yeah, grab a good hug.
How would the president of various unions in your current district describe you?
I think of somebody who is open, willing to listen, and you take a look at both sides. Somebody that has had to make a lot of tough decisions based on staffing and needs and financial predictions. There could be some that be good, there could be some that be bad. If everybody loved it, you know, you have that many people, have the right jobs. That's one of the side effects, unfortunately, I'd love to, we have moved on and, you know, to work with. Now, I'm a firm believer that when you sit down with unions, I think number one, I like, I always involve the board president. And the reason I like the board president is because, number one, you as the board now knows what was actually said at the table. But number two, they understand then that, yeah, we're all in this, okay? It's not just a superintendent and principal or assistant superintendent or something like that sitting down with them. It's a board number two, so that they have an actual, they know that the information is given to you the way they want it to get to you. And I think that's very important. When you get into contract negotiations, at some point in time, I like to take, you know, three, four million of the board, sit down, or has a problem, just come to the quizz and say, explain to them what did you want and why you want it, okay? Because now they're not, they don't understand, it's not just, they're not just getting my version of it, or whoever it happens to be negotiating, if you use a negotiator, they're not negotiating themselves. So in other words, same logic. Those are the type of things I think are important, is that open-minded communication, if they understand, yes, you do hear them, it's not just me.
What is your philosophy regarding professional development of teachers and principals? What role should professional learning communities play?
Well, that goes right back to that Teacher Collaboration Center that I was talking about. And that's a huge thing, I think. When professional, we don't get enough professional development in education. And why is that? Time. When do you have the time to do it with the kids all the time? So we have to create the time. And these teachers have done a wonderful job, it's definitely played by using this for that purpose, to come in to on their prep times, and sometimes even before and after school and work, along that line. We reward those back by doing their work things when they, when you see those things that can pop up. Look at, you had a, you took Joey here, and it might just be a single kid who was struggling for the last two years, now that the beliefs and boundaries have gone. You've got to recognize those type of successes with those kids. And you do that with things such as the teacher collaboration and professional development, getting them out there. So it's hard for people to change, okay? And the longer you've been in a position, the longer you've been doing something, the harder that change is for you. So you've got to get them out and give them fresh, give them fresh air, so to speak. Give them some ideas and stuff. And some people are very lucky, they don't want to leave. They're just happy as they are right there, whether it's in their own office, their own classroom, whatever it may be. Which we, we have to create the means and venues and avenues for them to get out and do that stuff. And that could, one example, that is that Teacher Collaboration Center. It's very important.
In your current position, how much time do you spend in schools, in classrooms, and in the community? I don't want to touch on that, or, or right back to what the kids have been talking about. And what value, what value has that done to you?
Well, I think it's a great value if you build that personal portfolio. Because I think you have to have open door policy, number one. If you're going to, if you're going to have a creative environment that is collegial at all, people have to feel, number one, like they can approach you. If you're not going to be approachable, and number one reason you're not approachable is they don't know you, okay? So they got to, they got to at least feel as, know we are, just to start with. Then you have to be approachable, that's stop in the classrooms, you know, whatever you can, stick ahead to the door and say, hey, how's it going? Anything you need? And they say, well, yeah, I can use this. And I say, well, then go talk to the principal. And it's kind of a joke thing, but that's, you know, what I like to do whenever you can get the ability. There are times of the year when that's not very possible, you are on the run, doing different things. Because you're, especially as districts get larger, it's easier for me in a smaller district, to get in and see the popular class, click my head in the door. And you find out real quick the ones that don't like it, there are ones that, oh, they're just, they're intimidated by it, they don't like it. So you try to back off from that. I still think it's important if you stick your head in the door on every occasion. I used to have a goal where once a week I wanted to click my head in the door, say hi. I could hang around, some law enforcement couple down, you look at it. Especially when you're cutting people left and right in the locker, especially in springtime. It's like, oh, no, it's coming to tell me I'm late, oh! So those are the type of things you have to do to get yourself out there. That, save those for the community. Because you've just got to be out there, you've got to be, you've got to be, you've got to shop at the local store, you've got to live in the community, okay? It all starts right there. I see a lot of people, a lot of teachers, a lot of administrators, and even some superintendents, they don't live in their communities. I've always lived in the community, and I always will, I'm a firm believer that you have to live in that community. You've got to devote a member that, all of my going to ask you to go raising taxes for Bob, it's not affecting you too. I can't do that. But you have to live in the community. I think that's, that's all that starts. You have to assess it. If I'm living, you know, thirty miles away, or twenty miles away, whatever it is, the next district. Can't, and it all started with me because I wanted to see my kids. My wife, at one time, I thought, you're perfect out, you're a firm believer that with all the politics that go on, it would be so much easier if we didn't live in the same district you worked in. You know, so how I would see my kids? You know, because I'm tied here, this is what I do all day long, I'll leave in a lot of cases. And she's, she's learned that, I think, over the years now, that that's important. It was important to my kids. You know, they made credit, as my son, I told the story, and if you don't mind, I'll do that on occasion here. I told the story to the three students I was with earlier today. I said, well, because they asked about my kids, and I said, well, I had two boys who are now in college, but two years apart. One was eighth grade, and the other one was in tenth grade. We'd been in Bassett for one year at that time, it was my second year there. And everybody had noticed that my kids were a little bit different. One was very touchy, lovely, huggy, the other one was like, oh, God, daddy, you're not going to walk in school with me. Like, we were standing with, standing out with a bunch of ladies in the office in the hallway, going down to the right from where my office is, is the high school, going down to the left is the little school. Just as we're talking, they were asking some questions about, bearing on the hallway, coming around the corner, comes my son Tip. He sees us, he goes running down the hallway, gives everybody in the group a hug, disappears off the thing. He no more disappears, around the corner, I guess my kids are kids skipping out of class, I don't know. Around the corner from the other end of the hallway comes my younger son. I raise my hand, he jerk around, I'm right back the other way. No, I'm disappearing. But you gotta be out there and you gotta see, people gotta see you. And you, living together is, is that first step to that and biggest step.
That's all the questions we have, but we do have some questions, uh, from the audience here.
Okay.
All right, first one is what types of supports and interventions would you propose for at-risk and special needs students at each of the levels, elementary and high school?
Okay, who asked it? Quite. What types of supports for, um, at-risk students?
At-risk, yes.
In elementary and secondary.
At-risk supports and interventions for.
I think I kinda, I kinda addressed that, I think, a little bit, but I mean, the bottom line is, you're looking for activities, I think, especially with those at-risk students, that you can, you can put in there with that money, especially tutoring programs after school, um, which you have throughout that. Maybe there's some types of pull-ups that you can do, intervention classes throughout the day for those. And those can be done all the way from the elementary through, through the high school. We do our tutoring programs after school and for elementary, we probably do it best because of the morning, early in the morning, seven o'clock program if they come in, about an hour before school. Those, those are the types, some of the types of things that you take a look at that we can do. Um, and typically, you can get those funded with those monies to move you as easily as possible.
Okay, another one. What role does a superintendent have in ensuring that a district hires the best and brightest as employees?
Number one, I think, when hiring process starts, if you're hiring, let's say a teacher. That building principal is always responsible for making sure that they bring in and do the correct work. It's my job to oversee and make sure that those things are being done. Phone calls are being made. It's amazing how many times I see people hire somebody and never made a reference call on them. And they're year down the road, they're trying to figure out, why did you hire them? Call the other districts, they might know, why did you hire them? Well, you got rid of them, so to speak. But, you know, that's their, their role. What I always ask is, the final two candidates come to see me, no matter who you hired. Ninety-nine point, ninety-nine percent of the time, I'm gonna take that number one candidate. Okay? But I still think it's important for me to get a feel for what it is that person is doing. Because the more people that come into contact with the individual and then are able to sit down and talk about them, the better picture you build of that individual is that somebody who fits the wants, the needs, the environment of our district, our building in this particular case. Because you can have the greatest teacher in the world, if they can't work cooperatively with the rest of the building, you're gonna have a problem. But, you know, we hire people, you know, I, when I hire principals, um, we're gonna involve other principals, involve teachers. It's a collaborative type of environment that you can sit down and do, it's not gonna be all on one. Now, when it comes to the end, that's one of those things where, yeah, it's my call. Okay? But, you know, after four or five times of me not turning down somebody that somebody else wanted, or that a group came up with, you're gonna have another problem. So your hope is that that comes out of those, those committee works, those, those groups, those, whatever the committee's gonna let you get or anything else. You're not gonna sit down and you're gonna talk afterwards, you're gonna say, well, we really liked that guy, he would want the look he do. Or you say, oh, man, this, this personality doesn't fit this district. And those are the questions that you're gonna have to answer some, that's what we have to do. That's how we come up with what we feel is the best fit.
Describe specific programs, policies, or other items you consider to be your greatest contributions to the schools or districts you have worked in, and how you would like to implement or develop those at Oxford.
Well, I wish I could sit here and tell you how I'd like to develop them in Oxford because you may have them already, but I haven't had a chance to really know exactly what all the program is like here at this particular point in time, you know, because we have twenty-four hours. But, you know, that teacher collaboration center is kind of, I think, a wonderful tool, um, to use. I, pre, any, any, um, early childhood programs, and I'm a very big believer in early childhood programs. I think they really help get our kids kindergarten ready. And when our kindergarten teachers and our first grade teachers aren't dealing with trying to get kids up to grade level speed, it's amazing how the growth just exponentially takes off and goes. And those are two of the biggest things, so budgetary wise, you know, the committee work, I mean, communication and committing with those type of things are what you bring.
Last one, tell us about the student that you have impacted the most in your career.
Um, and that's if you said, I was the high school principal at Maddox. I was, I was really, I'm really big into doing student things. We'd have lots of parties at night with kids, you know? And you bring in those bigger flannels, fill the gym, and they can do the school wrestling, all these type of things. Two years ago, I got an email, and I had been in Maddox for fifteen, sixteen years now, from a young lady, I didn't recognize the name at first. And she was a CPA for a large firm and, um, how? These are the reasons why we, we get an education, we put up with all the political stuff. And she was emailing me to thank me for getting her through high school. She says, you probably don't remember me, and I didn't. But I did remember her friend. She said, I remember I used to hang out with this other kid, such and such, a girl. And, uh, she was telling me about how she was on the verge of even thinking about suicide, of having family, all these things I didn't know as a high school principal. But she said, you were the one person who took the best, best of interest in me as a child, as a high school student. And she says, you, you came to me and, and made me feel worthwhile. And, um, she was, she got in trouble, um, she was telling about, I got in trouble and I suspended her for some time. And when I brought her back, the first thing I did is I made her come, I, I paid her to come babysit my kids. She, and she was impressed with the fact that I still felt enough with her as a person and everybody else looked at her. She's really the goths and, and she showed me that, so I remember, oh, I think I, yeah, I remember that. But, uh, it's about the things we can do, other than the educational thing, that makes, that gives a child a sense of security, a sense of self-worth, um, out there that allows them to learn at the level that they're truly capable of learning. That was, well, another one, I had a student from Korea when I was teaching years ago. He told one of the things I missed when you get superintendent is that contact with the kids that you used to have directly on time. But, um, I had a student from Korea, they brought her in one day and I was teaching her science class in eighth grade. She sat her down and they said, she just came over from, um, North Korea, basically had snuck her out. And, uh, she's living with, um, somebody in town right now, she doesn't speak any English, no nothing, uh, do the best you can. So she, I sat her with another student, one of the better students in class, and I asked the student, would you mind sitting with her for a while to help her? So every day she would sit there, every day, you know, just always go smile, you know, do some things. When she, um, six months later, she had to go live in Colorado and they found her aunt. She was going to Colorado. This girl came to me just in tears crying. She's starting to finally learn the English itself. You hand me a note, I still have that note bringing at home. And it basically had my name in Korean, the way you spelled my name in Korean, and it said, I want to thank you so much, you were, you, and you made my day bearable every day, but you always sent me, Jung Smile, my name is Jung, Jung Smile, chum. Like, just simple little things that we can do that touch these kids' lives and enjoy themselves.
That's all the questions we have. Do you have questions for the board? Would you like to ask any of us?
Well, Dan Lufthaus, I figured.
I have to apologize, I don't know, but, um, I'm just so impressed, I had to. I apologize for that.
No, that's okay, I'm just teasing you. Well, my first question is this. You have these wonderful programs, okay? They're minimum foundational laws. Is there a plan in place, I'm gonna guess there is, to be able to maintain, that you look at for maintaining these things down the road?
Yes, there is.
Um, your partnership with the Wayne. The Wayne Group, um, it's a twenty-year contract. Um, and I know that there's some concerns out there in the community, I seen there's a petition going around and about it, a couple people called me, all there's a petition going on, they don't know if they have it, and I said, they got, this is the place it's at, folks. Petition, no petition, you don't have a choice in that, or they wanted you to get out of there, now they can't. But, I mean, you've got a wonderful building that's being built and stuff. One of the concerns that I had was what happens, and I think I already even read about it, somebody brought this up in one of the articles in the paper that I had a chance to read. Who actually belong, does the building belong to?
The building's owned by Wayne. Owned by Wayne.
It's on school grounds?
No.
Oh, it's not on school property?
Yeah, that is, that is changed.
And, and, you know, I kinda cut you short on what our plan was, we're starting our next strategic plan right now, we just finished a strategic plan. We've got things in the works that were, so we can continue funding, so we can keep the programs going that we've started, give teachers raises, the whole. You know, we've operated on a small foundation grant for quite some time and survived that. Yeah, a big downturn, so that's the plan.
So this property is currently not owned by the school, or you said it was used by?
It will never be owned by the school.
The school has no. Okay, so there's nothing that could come back. It's a private individual who has donated land for this?
They are purchasing.
Purchase. Well, they are gonna, they're gonna burn up, so they won't be building on it. Okay, that was, that was just.
There was originally some discussion about it being on, about them building it on school property. That was part of some early negotiations.
Could have been an issue down the road.
Well, that was an issue because that's the reason it didn't happen, they would want it, we couldn't give them a piece of school property, and that's what they wanted to start. Or anything you want to add? It doesn't have to be a question.
Your foreign language program, my understanding is it's, it's a day, day-to-day program in the elementary. So that by eighth grade, these kids are actually fluent. Is that correct? That's the goal, you're building towards that. Gotcha, I was kinda curious because that's like, you have some things here that are every educator's dream to be able to get in a, in a district. And, uh, one of the reasons why I'm sitting here right now. And so my, my concern is, I think it's come out a few times, is how do we maintain these things? Because these are wonderful things, you don't want to lose these things, so how do we continue to maintain these things? And I'm sure you've looked at that. And what I, and that would be my biggest concern, who is wrong, is making sure that I see that. And the reason why I get a little gun-shy is we have a doctorate about this adjudicated facility, it's called Waterman Paterno. We supply the teachers for the facility, that's a private, private facility, and these kids come mostly from the inner city of Detroit, they get in trouble. Instead of telling them, putting on the streets, they send them into a lockdown facility. They have dorm rooms and stuff, again, these kids in there, it's, it's similar, except for the fact that they're, they're not in trouble to what you're creating right now here with this. That was a funding stream for the district, and the first thing that happened in a few minutes, I said, what happens? They quit sending these kids, oh, the way, we're not, we've been doing this for fifteen years. Six months after I asked that question, it happened. Cuts the budget, forced the government to start slapping those tethers back on the kids putting on the streets, we lost a hundred and fifty kids overnight.
They did that at Oxford schools, actually, they turned it into a charter school for all, we operated it for quite some time, and then they turned it into a charter school, which failed, now we've got it back.
Oh, you got it back?
Yes.
That was, you know, two point, two answers to your question you had. More language, uh, when you asked, probably from a five, ten, to eighth grade, and the goal was, we, that's our goal. I think you hit upon it really well. Our goal is to have them speak the language, whether it's Chinese or Spanish, any of the two offerings, um, fluently. But they, more important to us is to understand the culture so that they can use that as their grow.
They build those skills to be able to work in that global economy.
Because it's more important to be able to communicate and understand someone's culture and upbringing than just be able to diagram a sentence. And then as far as adjudicated youth, it's, you're right, it is a, it, it sometimes becomes a broad issue and, and it's, it's a difficult one because at any given moment, something could be taken away from you. But what we've been able to do is maintain through adding different revenue streams, and that's been our success.
I think, just addressing as far as the Wayne dormitory, um, that was one of the concerns is, something international goes down, whatever, all of a sudden, there's no students coming, um, that was a big concern for having it on the school property because now you're saddled with the building, you don't have students coming, there's expenses that are there, so having them purchase their own property and invest in that building on their own is a really important part of protecting our.
You're done, you're done, right? One thick counter. Showing my age, it's lost my question. To finish up though, I know you want to, you want to get another person coming in here pretty quick here, as I look at the clock, I know you do. As far as I'm concerned, um, you, you guys have done some wonderful things with kids and the community. And I'm hoping that we can continue to move forward with that in the future and that, um, funding doesn't mess that opportunity up for you. And that wouldn't be by your choice, obviously, if you had something that happened in the state law that was on there. What I, what I can believe I can bring to this district is the ability to continue to manage those programs and help those programs to foster and grow down the future. And by getting some alternative streams in here also, and helping to ensure that we can prolong this programming that you have for as long as possible. Be very excited about this opportunity, I appreciate you inviting me here tonight. I know you've got a lot of things to do, I'll leave you with this last thing. Through this, that one's getting kinda quick, but there it is. Throw it out to everybody, it's just what I call my hundred-day plan. A lot of students will do something along this line. Helps, keeps us organized, uh, so that we can, uh, really have focus when we first come in. And gives you as a board an idea about what that focus would look like when we come in here to start out in a career, in a career. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
It's fine, I'm still here.
But, um, I appreciate your time and I wish you the best, I know you have a very tough decision ahead of you. At least I hope it's tough.
We appreciate your time, we appreciate you coming, and you know that we have two other candidates who are in the area. So as soon as we know something, we'll let you know what the timeline is.
Michael probably told you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
My pleasure.
Pleasure, you too.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Romano.
My question, um, during the short break, several people asked a question about the timeline. And just for clarification, the job posting went out on January the fourteenth. And the entire search timeline was included as part of that posting. So if any candidate could look at it, the timeline is immediately below the application procedure. So candidates have access to the timeline for the last five weeks where we have to be able to prepare for the interview. It's not just surprise, surprise, Monday to Wednesday, it's four weeks of preparation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's not cold enough right now. We needed to take down. But we've got that whole bus. Now it's seven degrees now, you know? It has dropped, eleven p.m. one. And then, you know, three A M minus four. Six A M minus.
Without winter.
Without winter. Yeah, it's down in Georgia, but it's cold down there too. So it's, it's just gonna be pretty cold. He was on a, he died on Sunday, he died twelve o'clock. At the last four years, he was today, he came out of the airplane, and then all of a sudden, it's broke. Temperature dropped. So he was already, he said, he says, now I know what it's like to be a student.
He was a wolf. I'm not saying he's a wolf.
He's having muscle. No, he's having muscle. It's gotta be, it's gotta be, he's a boy, he's a young man, he's not gonna be bad. Is it good? It's all the same.
Hope you didn't have any trouble finding us.
You know I was gonna nail you on that, thank you.
Okay, we're ready to start. I'd like to welcome Mr. Tim Throne to the district here tonight, to interview for the position of superintendent. Tim is currently the deputy superintendent for Oxford Community Schools. Tim, this will take about ninety minutes. Each of us will take turns asking questions, twenty-five to thirty questions total. At the end of the interview, we'll give you the opportunity, if you have any questions for us, and we'll also have the audience present any questions that they may have. You can make a closing statement, and Mr. Wilmot will keep track of time, so if you're going long, he might, you know, say we've got to get moving here, get this over with, you know, ninety minutes, and get through all the questions. And I'm gonna start, so. We've had a chance to review your resume, the audience hasn't. We may be more familiar with you than the audience is. If you could just tell us a little bit about your background, why you're interested in this position, and that's it.
Well, I guess I'd start out by saying that I would, I would think that most people would know a lot about my background already, and so instead of just going through the traditional resume and historical perspective, I think I'd rather share my leadership point of view. Okay, and so I think the best way to do that is maybe to just tell a little story. So, actually, quite a few years ago, when my two oldest boys were in the middle school, they came home one day, and they said, Dad, we would like you to teach us about Texas holding poker. And while I was taken back a bit, and I'm thinking, do I really want to have this conversation? I thought, well, I might as well take advantage of the opportunity to teach them about ratios, odds, you know, the ills of gambling, those types of things, and see where we're going with this. And so, there was actually one, one night, I think we were watching ESPN, and they, they had some, some prior past champions, and they were interviewing them, and one of the past champions made this statement that just really resonated with me. And actually, I was the one who learned that night. This is what the past champion said. He said, there's only two, and only two types of Texas holding players in the world. Those that play to last, and those that play to win. And the reason why it resonated with me is I think that, I think that also describes the two types of leaders that are out there. Those that play to last, and those that play to win. What I want you to know is, I'm a leader who plays the game to win. So you may say, okay, well, doesn't everybody play the game to win? I don't necessarily think so. I think some do play the game to last. So here's my personal game plan for winning, and I call them the four Bs. The first thing is, be your best. Every day, work hard, do what you can do, and be sharp, and show good judgment. Second thing is, become your best. Never stop learning, grow, take time to be reflective. Third thing is, in school, when I see kids, usually when I leave them, the last thing I'll say to them is, be good. So since we have mainly a dance here tonight, I'll say it this way, be kind. You never know what somebody's going through at that time. Be kind to one another, exhibit courage when needed. And then the last thing is, have a ball. You need to have fun, you have to love those that you serve. So, you know, whether it's for a team, a department, an entire organization, I think the leader needs to strive to be the number one learner and the number one teacher. When it comes to, why am I interested in this position? To be honest with you, Oxford is where my heart is, there's no other way to say it. I've had two sons graduate from here, I have two more kids into middle school, and we attend church here, to say that myself and my family is not invested in the high street community would be an understatement. I think the last question is why, at this point in my career, I want Oxford to win? And I believe that I can help Oxford do that. If I didn't think I was the right person at the right time for this community, I'd be the first one to leave.
Thank you. Given what you know about the Oxford School District, what do you believe are the most immediate challenges that we face?
So an old partner of mine, Anderson, once told me, Tim, where there's conflict, there's opportunity. So let me just change that a little bit. Maybe where there's challenges, there's opportunities. What is Oxford's greatest asset? I don't think it's obvious on our financial reports. I don't think it's even stated on our, our balance sheet or in the profit loss. It's there, but it's hidden. Oxford's greatest assets are its people. And so I think the challenge is in leadership development. You have to utilize the assets that Oxford has, and that's one of Oxford's greatest assets. I think that while Oxford has a great vision and mission, and that in this next round of strategic planning, that that needs to be reaffirmed, one of the challenges is that Oxford doesn't have a stated list of values. Why is that important? Because the core values are the priorities of the organization. They're not the operational priorities, but they're definitely the cultural priorities. So, so that's gonna be very important. Make no mistake about it, at the end of the day, you can have the best strategies in the world, but cultural will eat strategy for breakfast. I think there's a big risk for whomever your next superintendent is. Why? Because the superintendent's values must align with the district's values, otherwise you're gonna run into problems. And I don't think that the district will have its agreed-upon defined list of values before you select your superintendent. So whoever that superintendent is, I think there's a big risk on their part. I think some of the other challenges are that Oxford needs to focus its priorities. And what I mean by that is, in the past, we've had strategic plan goals, we've had district improvement goals. I think goals need to align. When you have scarce resources, you need to utilize the work that's already going on, and become better at what you're working on. We need to develop a strategic roadmap. We need to develop metrics around that roadmap. And then I think I would say lastly, that innovation has served Oxford well, and therefore, I think we need to keep that educational mindset as we move forward in whatever Oxford decides to do.
Thank you. What specific capabilities and qualities would you bring to this position that you would, that would set you apart from other candidates?
That would set me apart? One, I'd say this is where my heart is. Not that other candidates couldn't have Oxford become a part of their passion and heart, but it's already there for me. I would say that an external candidate would not readily understand or comprehend both the sacrifices and the risks that have been taken in the past to create the opportunities that Oxford has today. I think that, that I would be coming to the table not only with the obligation to, you know, continue these programs, programs on and survive, I want to make them thrive. I want to make them better than what they are today. I think that the last round of strategic planning, having the opportunity to be a part of that, I think that would set me apart, just because I know historically what has happened. And I think already with the new round of strategic planning, trying to do it in a different way, because we realize that maybe the model that's served us well in the past isn't the model that's gonna serve us, us in the future. I think the last thing would be that, what would set me apart would be the relationships that I've already created, both with students, parents, community organizations, you know, those, those types of things. Again, not that, not that a new candidate can't come in and establish those, but what sets me apart is I already have those, and so I think Oxford would be able to move more quickly, because that time wouldn't be lost, trying to establish those. I think that just through my previous roles as tech director and executive director, I'm intimately familiar with our infrastructure, our physical facilities. Whether it's where buildings are, whether there's electrical panels, it doesn't matter. I'm already familiar with our physical infrastructure in the district. I think those things would set me apart.
Thank you, now Secretary Stupak has some questions.
Mr. Throne, how would you specifically, or would you go about establishing and maintaining positive public relations with our community?
Well, first thing is, you have to listen, and so, you know, I think it's, it's not only listening at all, but I think it's spending time with people, having relationships with those people. You know, there's that old saying, people don't care on what you know until they know you care. And so hopefully, my actions have demonstrated how much I do care about this district. From a, from a strategy perspective, for the last probably six months, anytime anyone clicks on, I think it's contact us, or I don't know, reach us, or whatever it is on the website, all of those emails come directly to me first. I have had numerous people ask me, why on earth are you doing that? You get hundreds of emails. Why? Because it keeps me really close with what people are saying. It keeps me close with what their concerns are. It keeps me close when they say, hey, I really appreciated this. And so I think there are strategies that you can do to, to help listen to the community, but I think it's listening and spending time with people.
Well, it sort of jumps into my next question, that answer right there, but can you share with us, other than that email concept, ways in which you've accomplished success with communications with the community regarding either problems or accomplishments?
Okay, so I know I have a tech background, but one of the most effective means that I have found in the last six months is call people back. It's one thing to, to get an email, it's quick, it's fast, but it's another thing that when someone has a real concern, sometimes they just want to listen to a voice and talk to somebody. And so I think you have to be committed to doing that. At the start of school, we had some, some transportation issues. There was numerous nights where, till nine, nine-thirty at night, I was calling parents back and talking to them. Why don't you just send a group email? You don't do that. People want to be heard, they want to hear your voice, and they want to know that they've been heard. And so, so again, on that personal level, I think that you talk to them, you call them back. Corporately, I think that you, you spend time with organizations. Not just, you know, keeping up to date on what they're doing, but be involved in their organizations. I don't know, I saw Rod when I came in here, I'll use the DDA as an example. I don't know, a while back, maybe it was, I don't know, a year ago, I was at a basketball game, I remember that. Rod and I were talking, and he was saying that maybe some of the activities that were coming up with the DDA, and, and actually, I think it was with our Lone Ranger days. And Rod said, boy, you know what? It sure would be nice if we could get some support from the schools in, in helping us promote this. So you know what? We made sure that we put it in that last newsletter in June, we promoted it, we promoted the alumni band, participants to come back and play in the parade. So it's not just listening, it's also reaching out and helping those organizations be successful in the community. So both personally and corporately, I think you have to do that.
So you like to jump to my next question.
Sorry about that.
Yeah, so my next question is, besides the, getting involved with the Lone Ranger days, what other, some examples of community activities in which you've been an active participant and provided leadership in how to benefit the district?
From the district perspective, I think our last round of strategic planning, that involved the community, that was over a course of a number of years, and I think that, that provided leadership both at the district level as well as within the communities. I think those, those other partnerships, whether it be Parks and Rec, being involved in their activities. I've spent some time with Ron, actually, over the last couple of months, discussing some, some issues and trying to work some things out with Parks and Rec. I think other, other partnerships, not just locally, at the state level, partnerships with some of our suppliers, some of our strategic partnerships with both Cuba Packer and Cisco, how they've been able to help us out. I think also partnerships at the international level. I think also partnerships at the international level. Steph and I have had the Consul of Mexico to our house for dinner. We established that relationship, and we've been able to bring opportunities to our students that if you don't reach out and spend that time, I don't think those opportunities ever make themselves available.
Thank you. Trustee Swire?
What do you think is the most important educational policy challenge facing districts like ours today?
Can you say that one more time?
Sure. What do you think is the most important educational policy challenge facing districts like ours today?
Are you talking about the state or national levels?
You decide. It's your question.
All right. I think that superintendents are at ground zero when it comes to feeling the impact of education policy, whether it is either state or national. I think it's important to reach out, to make connections at those levels, so that you feel like you do have a voice in impacting those policies. From a, from an overall perspective, I think that probably defining student achievement may be the most important educational policy facing, I think, Oxford today. Not only defining it, but how you report on it. I don't think that Oxford can be limited by how the state or national government wants to define it. While, I don't know, I'll use Common Core as an example. Common Core is going to evaluate our students based on close reading and being able to respond to questions in a textual format. In reality, just like what's happening here tonight, our students have to learn but also have to perform. When they perform, when they're on that job, they're not going to be doing it via text. They're not going to be writing an answer to their customer. They're going to be interfacing with them. They're going to be having to present orally. They're going to have to be interacting with customers. And so I think that's the most important one because we have to get it right on how we want to define, how we want Oxford students to achieve, and how we're going to assess them, whether it's both academically, but artistically and athletically, in all those I don't know, did I answer your question?
Yes. I'll take that. What in fact do you feel the Michigan Department of Education designation of focus schools is having on Michigan's school districts in general?
Okay, so I'm going to be blunt. I think it sends the wrong message. Why does it send the wrong message? Because it doesn't pass the theoretical test. What's my theoretical test? Theoretical test is where you take things to their logical conclusion. Personally, I have a theoretical test, a practical test, and a common sense test. Focus schools say you need to narrow the gap between your low achievers and your high achievers. I understand that. But theoretically speaking, the only way to do that is to arbitrarily hold the high achievers down so that the low achievers come up, so that that gap is narrowed. I have a problem theoretically with that because I think in Oxford's own mission statement, we want every student to reach their potential. No matter where those kids come in at, theoretically, if each one of those kids are getting a quality education, that gap's always going to exist. Because the low achiever is going to be improving, the high achiever's always going to be improving. Why would I arbitrarily try and narrow that gap? I understand what they're trying to do, but I think how it's implemented is bad.
Okay. What has been the most unpopular administrative decision you have had to make? And how did you handle the reaction to the decision?
So how honest do you want me to be? Do you want the most?
There's people who work in the district here, so I might as well just go with it.
If they don't agree, they'll probably say something.
They're allowed to ask follow-up questions.
The most unpopular?
In your opinion?
Well, in my opinion. The most unpopular happened a few years ago. I was the OAA president at the time. I remember it was like yesterday, I can tell you the room that we were in. It was near the start of school, and we were having an OAA meeting before the year started. And I announced to them that I had decided to take the executive director job here at Central Office. Were they upset? Yes. I think at the time that we had a bazillion things going on. Stress levels were high. Everyone was working on a PhD. You know what a PhD is? Pile higher and deeper. Everybody had it, okay? And I don't think that they recognized why I was taking the position. I think that in their minds, I was becoming one of them. If I'm really honest, I think that's when part of the culture started breaking down in our district. Because I think there was a us versus them mentality. I knew it was going to be challenging, but I also knew that the chasm that existed between the buildings and apartments and Central Office needed to be bridged. And that was my goal. Maybe this is the most important thing that I need you to hear. I think what the administrators saw was now no difference between myself and the superintendent. What I don't think they saw was all the times that I would work on their behalf to modify or change the game plan. But what I was unwilling to do was, once a play was called, the play was called and I was all in. I don't think that everybody had that same team mentality. And that's why culture started to break down. I'm not saying that I always agreed with everything, and I would go behind closed doors, and I would argue for what I felt was right. But once it was called, it was called. And you know what? I take it as a compliment that people didn't see any difference between me and whatever the play was. To me, in my mind, I did my job. So, you know, to this day, do I think that, you know, maybe a few administrators are still upset with me? You know, I told you that culture eats strategy for breakfast, and working on the culture needs has to be the highest priority for the next superintendent. If not, we're not going to be able to get from good degree or even world class, as was stated in our vision. So am I still reacting to that decision today? Yes, I am. Was it difficult? Yes. Did people feelings get hurt? They did. But was it the right decision because it was what was best for the team?
Thank you.
I'm going to lighten the mood.
Thank you.
Maybe not. Could you describe your typical style of leading and talk about situations? You might stray from that style.
I would say, I would use two words, relational and approachable. I think that would describe my leadership style. But I think leadership in general is about serving others and helping them become their best, no matter what they're trying to do. Probably the best model, and I know I'm biased because I got my MBA through the school, is Ken Blanchard's SERVE model. And their process for SERVE is see the future, engage and develop others, reinvent continuously, value results and relationships, and embody your values. I don't see myself straying from that.
Please describe the strategic planning process you're most comfortable with using, and share any evidence you have that the process has been successful. Remember, you have a clause.
All right. What went in my most comfortable with? The traditional process. We've done it, it's served us well. I don't think that's the best process for Oxford going forward. I think that with increased financial constraints, with increased expectations, both at the state and federal level, Oxford needs to put as many strategies in place as possible to make us nimble and be able to react quickly as if we're a very small district. I don't think that the traditional strategic planning process, where it's more of an event and you have one time of the year to really garner input, will serve us well. Because I think there's too many times during the year, too many things come up, even good things, opportunities come up that we may be able, or want to jump on, that we need to be able to have the flexibility to do that. So while I'm not comfortable with it, because I've never done it myself, as if a lot of organizations have, I do think that it's the best for Oxford going forward.
What are some examples of how you have used data and research to make important decisions in your current position?
I think I try to use data on a daily basis, whether it's just from a small example of, you know, how many emails am I getting on a particular topic? You know, is there a concern there? Do I need to be concerned about something going on because we don't want more emails about that? You know, I think we use data all the time. I think I would rather respond to the question in that we need to be careful with the data that we're looking at. Because we can answer a question with a whole bunch of data, but if we're not asking the right question, we're going to get way down the road and end up someplace where we don't want to be. So I'll give you an example. When I started in 2000, there was 10 people in the tech department in Oxford. We managed a couple thousand devices, maybe 40, 50 applications, and we were having issues left and right. Jump forward to today. We manage upwards of 20,000 devices, hundreds of applications and programs, increased our customer service, done a whole bunch of things more and better. But you know how many people are in the tech department today? 10. Same amount. Now, if you look at the data, you'd say, "There should be 20 people in that tech department." No, there shouldn't be. I think the tech department is appropriately staffed where it is today. So I guess my only caution is, do I think it's important to use data to make decisions? I do. But just be careful in what data you're looking at, and don't jump to conclusions. I think that's the bigger lesson.
Did you take a drink? Tim, could you give some examples?
She added that one question that was taken off.
Oh, a nice sheet. We were done. Just because it's important. What are the key practices needed to establish and maintain a good, like, working relationship with the board and us and Steph?
Communication. Just ask my wife. That probably should be number one. Even if it's awkward, even if you don't know how to start it, you always got to communicate at all levels. I think that, I don't know any other way to say it, other than I think you need to just check your ego at the door. It's not about you, it's not about what's going on, it's not about a title. It's about communicating, helping people, getting things done. With that, I think there's collaboration. You've got to talk, you've got to work back and forth. It can't just be a one-way street. You've got to have two-way communication. Again, I think that's both individually as well as with organizations across the board. I think probably the biggest thing is, and this is just me, I think you have to cherish and value those relationships. You know, years from now, you're not going to say, "Well, what did Jim Reese do?" You know, a list of things or this kind of stuff. They're going to remember Jim Reese for who he is. So I think you have to value relationships.
Can you give us some examples of educational change and reform that you've initiated that improved success for Oxford students?
Probably my best example would be OVA. When we wrote Project Reimagine, part of that was we envisioned a virtual school that was none around to even try and compare it to. And so being able to take that from an idea to 800 students today, serving students all across Michigan, impacting students at the highest levels that are being appointed to West Point, to having full ride scholarships to go to geometry school, to, just a couple of weeks ago, I went and visited OVA, and I was introduced to a student there. And I was told by this teacher that this student was working on one of the projects, one of the partnerships we have with Simpson Park Camp over in Rome. And this student went over. And this student went over to help be a part of that. And I would say that this student is not your high academic flyer. And in many regards, you know, this was a student that had special needs and really wasn't fitting in. And this is what the teacher said to me. "Tim, OVA and our project that we're doing with Simpson Park changed this kid's life." So, when I think about impacting students from all ends of the spectrum and creating something from scratch, yeah, I think that's our job.
How do you describe experiences with both low incidence and high incidence special education students?
A benefit I've had coming up through the tech department is that special ed teachers have reached out to me and asked for help in trying to determine appropriate technologies to help all spectrums of the students. And so, before I can even give advice on what's available, I have to understand first where those student instructional needs are and what are the challenges. And so, that's allowed me to see that range that I benefited from. And so, I don't know, on a personal level, I know what it's like as a parent. And so, I think that helps to empathize, okay? I think from a very, very broad perspective, I think it was a case called Yoder versus Wisconsin. And it was brought before the Supreme Court. And this is what the Supreme Court said, that the parents in the public school had two responsibilities, two main responsibilities, that students are literate and self-sufficient. I love that. Why do I love that? Because what self-sufficiency looks like in 1960 looks different than what it looks like in 2015. But yet, as parents, we know what our own individual kids need to be self-sufficient. I think somewhere in there, that's what we've got to be working towards.
How would you go about evaluating the effectiveness of the curriculum, teaching methods, and assessments used in our district?
All right. So, let's not fool ourselves in thinking that just because we were a student, we know anything about teaching. That's the first thing, okay? At the same time, though, I think that just because maybe someone doesn't choose teaching as a vocation doesn't mean they're not a teacher or a leader. I think of some of the best lessons I learned in my life were not in a classroom. And so, I think I would start out by saying that. I think that specifically when it comes to curriculum, most people will say, "Joyce, what's Oxford's math curriculum?" And most people will answer, "Oh, that's Everyday Math, we use Everyday Math." Well, Everyday Math really isn't our curriculum. I view curriculum in like three different areas. I think you've got resources, which in our case, Everyday Math is that resource. But I think you also have standards. What are we teaching to? And then, I think you also have teaching strategies and assessments. All of those components bundled together is our curriculum. And so, how do you go about evaluating that? I think you've got to break them out and evaluate each of them independently. Do we have resources at every level? And are they appropriate? Are they working? Are they not working? Do we have gaps in what we're trying to teach in our standards? When that student goes from 3rd grade to 4th grade, wherever it stopped and where it picked up, is there a gap in there? That's your vertical line there. Do we have horizontal line? Are all the 3rd grade teachers teaching the same thing? Teaching to the same standards? Are the standards that we're teaching appropriate? We may disagree with the state or the national government, say, "You know what? We don't think this is appropriate at the 3rd grade level." We certainly may, I don't know. But I think that you have to break all of those things down. I think that in particular, the assessments give you data. I'm not going to reiterate what I said earlier about being careful about how you use data. But when it comes to curriculum and data, I would say that, you know, there's probably three things that you really need to make sure. And that is that the data is relevant, that it's timely, and then it's actionable. Is it relevant? Is it data about what we're talking about? Or is this just something that we've always done and we don't know why we're doing it anymore? Is it timely? I gave a student a test today, and I don't get those results for a week from now. Time's marched on. As a teacher, they're already teaching something else. I've missed the opportunity to address that with that kid. So, the data, the assessment, it has to be timely. And then lastly, it has to be actionable. I have to be able to make an inference about this data such that I can impact what that student is learning. Just because I'm collecting data doesn't mean that I can take action with it. So, I think the challenge is to maybe work to get really good assessments that are timely, that are relevant, and are actionable. That's just an ongoing process. And identifying where our current assessments don't meet those criteria and where we need to improve on it.
Can you share your experience dealing with district-wide IB programs?
So, I think it was maybe about a year ago, I went to a conference on IB sustainability. And I learned a lot at that conference from a different perspective. Not just what's involved with PYP or NYPD or DP, but how do you sustainably grow that program district-wide? I would not say that I am an expert by any means when it comes to IB, but I would feel that I would at least have a fighting chance in an argument about somebody if they wanted to discuss it. You know, realistically, we've made huge investments in IB. Huge investments, dollar-wise, time-wise, from a professional learning perspective. Huge amounts of hours. From my little corner of the world, I think one of the greatest things that IB has given this district is a vocabulary and a language for teachers to talk about curriculum, no matter what level they're at. There's a common language there that allows a kindergarten teacher to now talk to a second-grade teacher. That allows a kindergarten teacher in one building to talk to a kindergarten teacher in another building that we simply just didn't have before. It's not that, you know, we didn't try that. We just, we didn't have any program in-house that enabled that learning and that language to take place. With that being said, do I think that we need to evaluate IB and make sure that we're getting our return on our investment? Yeah, we do. We need to do that with every program, but especially in academic programs. We have to be spot-on.
Did you approach this next question here? Just a little bit slipped in this segment, so we might get ahead of it pretty quick.
My final question. Can you share and provide specific examples of your leadership experience in dealing with global education initiatives and programs?
In 30 seconds.
I'll be brief. I think we heard concerns from our community. In December, I went to China and renegotiated our operating agreement. I think that was a big win for us. There were things that we needed to adjust based upon what our community told us. I think even with the relationship with the previous council of Mexico, I know that he just emailed stuff the other day. And so, yeah, it's important and I think I have that as well.
That's present, that's all.
Yes. Describe your experience with budget development and financial management.
Well, I've developed budgets a bunch of different ways, managed budgets a whole bunch of different ways. I think what's important, probably at this level, is that what I would want you to know is, I strongly believe that your strategic plan should drive the budget and the budget should drive the plan. There's a big difference. And many districts, right now, today, are waiting to see what type of funding they're going to get from the state, and then they're going to draw up the plans. While I understand that, I also understand from a vision and a strategic perspective, we have to know where we want to make our investments, where we want to move going forward. Your plan should drive that, not what's coming down from the state. So, from a budgeting perspective, it should be driven by your strategic plan. From a purely management perspective, I think maybe the only thing I'd say, from your perspective, for the district with a $52 million budget, I think you all should probably be reviewing that budget probably quarterly. We need to keep our eye on that ball. And we need to make sure that not only when challenges impact us and we need to make adjustments, we also need to be ready to jump on opportunities that present themselves too. And if we need to midstream and say, "You know what? We're willing to take some money out of fund equity in order to make this investment," then we need to do that. You can't wait and do that on an annual basis. You have to continually do that throughout the year.
In tough financial times, how do you set priorities when there are competing interests, such as the need to implement programs for struggling students and also keep programs for gifted students?
So, I don't know. I think maybe I almost used the exact same answer. I think you have to look to your plan. You're going to make investments that are not on an annual basis. Some years, you're going to want to make investments in this program, knowing that two years down the road, you're going to want to change those investment dollars over to a different program. The biggest hurdle is always trying to equitably fund all of those investments when you have such competing needs for resources. And that's just more of a management thing. That's something that you just have to constantly do.
What ideas might you explore to raise money for the district? Have you had success in procuring additional funds for your current district?
I think money is usually the result of how good of a job you've done. I don't think that's necessarily the end goal. Let me say it a different way. I don't think people start out, or at least the ones that actually end up being rich, I don't think they start out saying, "I want to be a millionaire." They usually start out by saying, "I want to offer this unique product or service or be really good in this area." And if they are really good, the end result is money follows and they become rich. So, while I can appreciate, you know, the focus of what can we do to raise money, I guess my answer would be, if we get really good in our programs and our services that we offer, I think money will follow. I also think, though, that there's a piece of innovation that comes into play. And, I don't know, I'll just, I'll use a quick example. When we started our bond project back in 2009, I held a potential partner summit. I can tell you when I did that, people were looking at me like, "You're crazy. What are you doing? Why are you doing this?" Well, I'm going to shorten the story. Those potential partners, since then, have probably helped bring upwards of $2 million in additional goods and services into this district that we wouldn't have had without those partnerships. So, have I had success? Use an example, I just called PIM just a couple of days ago. And Intacom just donated two additional laptops to our robotics program. And so, I think through those partnerships, through those relationships, that's how you secure additional funding. Looking at purely the financials on our district website, if there's one area where I think that maybe we should pursue, I don't know, I'm just saying maybe, is in grant writing and foundations. And when I say grant writing, I mean grants outside of like MDE, you know, education grants and the federal government grants, not those types of things. I'm talking about grants from private organizations. Both types of, about communities.
Describe the extent of your experience in managing facilities and district operations.
Again, I think one of the benefits of growing up in the tech world is knowing all about our facilities. Whether it's where shut-off valves are, where breakers are, all those types of things. That's just, that's been a big benefit mine. And so, it's forced me to learn about different departments and programs that maybe I otherwise wouldn't have had that opportunity. And so, I'm grateful for that. I'm grateful that, you know, even today, transportation and maintenance, you know, while on paper it may report up through me, I think that's a benefit and that it keeps me close to what's going on in those buildings.
What has been your experience in dealing with schools of choice programs? Do you see, what do you see as the advantages or disadvantages of such programs?
I don't think I need to tell you all that in Michigan, funding is based upon your headcount. Schools of Choice has benefited Oxford because we've been able to grow our revenue. But more importantly, we've been able to provide an educational... an educational experience and opportunities to students who would not otherwise ever had the opportunities that they've had. So on a human level, those families are really grateful. Have we benefited financially because we've been able to grow our student count? We have. Here's the struggle. And I'll say it two different ways. One, you have to manage and stay away of that culture of us versus them. When that culture starts to seep into your organization, you're just going to have more and more problems. I think that's one thing. I think the other thing is that you can't grow too quickly or too fast such that your enrollment will decline later on. I'll say it this way. Oxford needs to manage schools of choice so that we can sustainably grow our district. It will not do us any good to just open the floodgates, have thousands of students come in if we can't service those kids. But at the same time, if we totally close off schools of choice, will our our financials, excuse me, go down? They will because headcount will go down. And as soon as you lose enrollment, you have to make cuts. There's no other alternative. So I think there are huge benefits to schools of choice. The advantages are, you have to manage them well and stay on top of it. Otherwise, they can, they have the potential of creating really big problems.
Thank you.
How would you hold individual school sites and central office staff accountable for results while improving district morale at the same time?
I think there's a huge difference between seeing your job as holding people accountable versus helping people be accountable.
Say that again, please.
Yep. I think there's a big difference between seeing your job as holding people accountable versus helping them be accountable. People want to be employed at Oxford schools. They have a passion for kids. They have a passion for the work. People in general want to be held accountable. But they want to be held accountable in the right way. What's the right way? I think you have to give people some autonomy. I think that you have to show them some relatedness. How what their work is doing impacts those around them. That's when you get into the whole systems thinking world. When people know what they're doing, how that impacts somebody else that they may not see, all of a sudden, it's a whole different world in how they view the work that they do. So I think that you can help that by doing that. I think in the end, you build their competence. You build their skills and abilities. I don't know, I don't want to say amazed, but I'll say that most people think that the appraisal is for the district. The appraisal process, the evaluation, is no value to the district. The value is to the employee. If you don't view it that way, no longer things get out of whack. So I think that the one thing every employee needs that most bosses do not know how to give is truth and grace. Not one or the other, not in various degrees equally. I think the CEO of American Express said it in a more contemporary way. He said that it's the role of the leader to define reality and provide hope. That's what people need. You know, I've talked about winning. I'm a competitive person. I love those analogies. That's just who I am. For me, one of the, I tell students this all the time. You have to learn how to win. And they look at me like I'm speaking another language. "What do you mean? How do I learn to win?" You have to learn how to win. One of the keys of learning how to win is resilience. Why is resilience so important? You learn from your mistakes. You profit from your losses. You gain from your pain. You advance from your adversity. That's how you learn to win. That's how you learn to win in the workplace. Did that answer your question?
How would the presidents of various unions in your current district describe you?
A nice guy.
He's not here, he can say whatever he wants.
Jim Gibbons would say, "A great golfer."
Is that what the Jim game?
Hopefully they would see me working on their behalf. Until you have owned your own business or you have been in charge of a business, I don't know as if you can fully comprehend people's livelihoods every day knowing that you impact them. I don't see unions out there. I personally see people. And at the end of the day, if you don't take care of your people, nothing else is going to matter.
What is your philosophy regarding effective professional development for teachers and principals? What role would professional learning communities play, if any?
This is what I've observed. I think teachers learn the same way our students learn. What do I mean by that? I think they all come to the table with different skills and abilities. They all come to the table with different passions. They all come to the table with varying interests in different topics. Maybe what I'd say is, what you don't do. You don't throw them all in a room and expect them to have the same interest in that topic. You don't expect them to have the same abilities and you don't stand there and lecture to them. I think that the exact same thing of what we have as files to how we want to individualize learning for our students, we want to do the exact same thing for our staff. I think PLCs play a major role in that. Oxford has a great professional learning plan out there. It was written, I think, I don't know, maybe three years ago, something like that. Till this day, I still haven't seen another district produce a long-range professional learning plan. Now, does that mean our work's done and we're good to go? No. Do we need to evaluate that? Do we need to make improvements upon that? Do we need to get feedback from our teachers on how that plan is going?
In your current position, how much time do you spend at the schools, in classrooms and in the community? What value has that been to you?
In my previous positions, almost all of it. And I think it was a huge benefit. If there was something going down and students were talking about it, I didn't have to wait for an email because I was hearing it. Being in the buildings, if there were concerns from parents or staff members, I was hearing it. I think it was a huge benefit. I think since taking on my current role as deputy superintendent, it's been a much bigger challenge. Because I haven't been in the buildings a hundred percent. I've had to spend time over here. If I'm honest with myself, it's probably the thing that I least like about my current role. Not that central office is some big, bad, evil place, but it's just not where the kids in the action are. It's just not. I don't know, maybe other than having to wear a suit and tie every day would be the other thing. I think what I have found for me right now, I am going to have to consciously program and plan to be in buildings. Not only because that's where my heart is, but I think that's what's needed. It's pretty tough to have relationships with people that you've never seen them, you've never talked to them, you're never able to have lunch with them, any of that kind of stuff. But it's a big challenge. I understand. I mean, I lived back and forth arguing whether I was even going to have an office here when I took the deputy job. "No, you have to have one here. You have to have a presence." Okay, I get it. I'm just telling you, for me, it was a struggle.
That's all the board questions. Now I've got some from the general public. He thought those were tough. You've touched on this a little bit, I think, but describe specific programs, policies or other items you consider to be your greatest contribution to the district you have worked in and that you would like to develop in Oxford. Will you just comment on what the, or if you have some new ones?
I think my biggest contributions have been the relationships that I've established and the loyalty to the district. There's been times where there've been things I really didn't want to do, but that's what I really in my heart of hearts thought was best. And that was the biggest contribution I can make.
Okay, what role do you see the superintendent has in ensuring that the district hires the best and brightest employees?
I'm going to talk about it at two different levels. I think that, again, going back to professional learning, I think the onus is on the district that we have to provide that appropriate evaluation model and that we owe it to our people to develop them. If we can't say we've taken these steps to try and hold someone accountable, then the person who's overseeing that person should be held accountable. And I'm going to answer it from a superintendent perspective. I think your current superintendent has built a team around himself that he felt brought the skills and abilities to the table in order to make himself and this district successful. Do I think that it's equally as important, whether your next superintendent is, that he knows himself well enough and he has the flexibility to build a championship team around him? It may not be the same, I don't know. But I do know that, you know, there have been numerous people out on the world that have tried to, in essence, buy a championship team. You know, there's something called chemistry. You can't buy that. You have to know what skill sets you need, but you also have to know what type of personalities and things that you need on your team to make it a championship team.
Thank you. What types of supports and interventions would you propose for at-risk and special needs students at each of the levels, elementary and high school?
I don't think that, I don't think I would propose any interventions without first having the principals and the teachers tell me what ones are working and what ones aren't. I think I'd have to ask a lot of questions. Off the top of my head, I wouldn't want to presume that I know that.
Do you think that your familiarity with people in our district would hinder your ability to make a tough decision?
No. I don't know any other way to say it other than no. I think that some very tough decisions that I've had to make in the past, has it jeopardized some relationships? It has. Not because it was, you know, Tim Thrum got in an argument with Mark Steppik. It wasn't that at all. It was more because maybe Mark Steppik didn't agree with the decision that Tim had. I think that's on me to try and work through that. But again, at the end of the day, you have to make those decisions that are best for the district, not what's best for Tim.
Tell us about the student that you have impacted the most in your career.
I don't know. Hopefully, there's more coming that I'll be able to impact, but I don't know, I guess I would just, I'd have to say my own kids. Just because I have the strongest relationship with them. Just because they know me the most. I would think that because of the time that I've spent with them, I've probably influenced and impacted them, good or bad, the most.
That's all the questions now. If you have any questions for the board or anything you'd like to closing statement, anything you want to add to what you've talked about?
I've got two questions for you guys. The first question is, you know, whether I am the superintendent for Oxford or not, I believe I will be a superintendent this fall. My question is, will you commit to giving me feedback on my interview term? That's my question. Will you commit to doing that? It's my desire to be the number one learner, to be the number one student and the number one teacher. I want to take advantage of your evaluation tonight to help me grow. So that would be my first question. All right? My second question would be, I know we're running out of time, so I would like to hear some of your individual hopes, dreams, visions that you have for the next superintendent in Oxford schools for the next five years. What are those?
Go ahead. This is not a state or national level.
I was prepared to answer both, but
Local, local. Not local, local.
Well, in answer to your first question, I think we would be, at least I personally, if you were asking me for my evaluation of you, I would like to do that privately.
Yes, absolutely, yes. I'm not looking for that right now. I'm not looking for that right now.
Or not, it's not tonight. But I will say that I am very thoughtful and mindful that you wanna be able, you wanna, you wanna learn, you wanna grow. And by, by learning every chance you can, that just shows some level of, I don't know it all. And I like that. I like that. I like that in person, I like that. So with that being said, your, your other question, you know, it, repeat your question.
Sure.
Globally.
What, what is your, your hopes and dreams, your visions for the next superintendent in Oxford Schools in general over the next five years? What does that picture look like?
I, when I first got involved in, in Oxford Schools, we came over from Catholic schools, I had a big, and I shared this with Carol, I had a big drive for special needs kids. Because, and you pointed it out, and others have pointed it out, we need to give every student at every level the ability to maximize their potential, whatever that is, high, middle, low. I think we need to look at our resources, how we spend them, to give those students that have special needs the opportunity to achieve at a greater level than they can get anywhere else. We look at a lot of different things in Oxford. And if we can become a school district that services that specific group along with the others as well as we do, and even better, we can attract more students and have that humanity side that you, that piece that you're talking about. Those school of choice kids come into here and they drive from various different businesses. But think about what you could do for a student with special needs. I wanna go to Oxford because I can get, reach my four dimensions, not just what the state says I have to be because that's what they're grading me. I wanna be the best that I can be, whatever level that is. So that's my big goal. And to get there, we need the right dreams. So like you say, sometimes you make unpopular decisions and, you know, it's not that I disagree. It's because I feel as though that's how we're gonna achieve those goals for all of our students.
Yes, go ahead, Carol.
What I'd like to see is that we've got a lot of programs in place that we were able to, to put. I would like to see the next superintendent evaluate those programs, see what is working, what do we really need, what don't we? I also wanna see our teachers and staff, everyone has worked so hard the past five, six years. I know they have. I wanna see them get support in the classroom and financially. That's my biggest thing.
I would echo the same thing with, with the caveat that we don't necessarily have to be the biggest and take in hundreds of students. If we're the best, we should be able to sustain the programs. We should be able to attract the students that we would like to attract, attract, we wanna revisit school of choice or whatever it is. But I would say the same thing, that the reason we're here is to educate every child in the district, whatever level they're at, if, if they need help. And that's what I would like to see, is that the teachers have all the help that they could possibly have. And with this new way of making partnership, if that money that we talked about fixing roofs with or whatever that extra funding is, I would like to see that if the teachers need more support with that program, then I don't care if that money is fixing the roofs right off the bat. I wanna help whatever it takes to help all the students in Oxford and not take anything away from anyone. I want, I want the teachers to have the help they need. I wanna continually be able to fund them and give them raises. That's, that would be the goal. Mark?
Thank you. I liked some of the things that you said tonight and that sort of goes in with what my vision would be. And it's sort of another way of saying what you said is, sort of if you build it, they will come. And that's if we can be the best that we can be in all areas from the top down to all the teachers and all the staff, then, then people are gonna wanna be here, whether it's moving to the district or school of choice or Weibo or whatever it is. But I think that has to be our focus to, to be the best that we can be. And that's what I wanna see happen. And also, that sort of correlates with building the chemistry in the team to be able to do that. You know, I, I think that's really important. And so that's sort of my vision.
For me, I think it's like act locally, but think globally. And how does what this board do and what central office does and what our administrative team does, how does that really impact what our teachers do in classrooms every day? And I just want that to be a more connected vision and ambition and something that just don't say we're the best. Why are we the best? How do you know? What are we measured against? So you sort of wanna sort of look at that data more carefully. And when someone says, why do I wanna come to Oxford? I don't wanna just say, well, because of all the different opportunities we offer kids. I want to really say, you wanna come to Oxford because, and just have like a concrete list of five things. So I think it's that idea of just how do we impact teaching and learning every day in our classroom and be able to articulate that as a district.
I'd be willing to share my thoughts with you on interviews, though you'd like that. Certainly at appropriate time, I'd be willing to do that. As far as what we're looking for in a superintendent for myself, I think it's obviously someone who's going to move us forward from the point of where we're at. And I think that individual needs to be someone who can bring the groups together in our community. And I mean, teachers, staff, community members. Community members who don't have kids in the district. That's the person that we hire needs to reach out to all of those groups and stakeholders and make them feel a part of the district. And in terms of listening to them and then taking that information and in a leadership role, work out with, work that out and move that out to the administrators and teachers and staff and saying, this is what we're about and this is where I feel we need to go. And get the feedback from them on how do we do it? And let me help you when you say, this is how we're gonna do it. Let me, as a superintendent, be the one that provides you the resources, time, and things to do it.
So yeah, I would definitely get feedback. And I would ask that you continue to give me feedback because I know on several occasions I've asked you to evaluate me as a board member and I would like you to continue to do that if you end up in that role. We have a lot of great programs and that really is, I've said many times, that's why my kids are here. I think our number one thing, we need to build relationships. Because no matter how many great things we have, if the relationships are bad, it still trickles down and it can muddy the waters. Secondly, I would say evaluating our programs, which multiple people have mentioned and looking at the financials and combos of those. I think our infrastructure needs are very important. It's probably gonna be one of my big things because we've invested a lot of time and money into the many good programs that we have. And along with that comes a lot of material goods. And so if you don't protect what is around that, then you can now impact everything you've spent money on. I think the biggest thing I try to strive for and I would like to see in our district is balance. Not, not the pendulum too much here, too much there, but really taking all these great things that we have and how do we balance them equitably and make them all excellent? Instead of, well, this one functions mediocre and that one really struggles, but this one's really great.
Jim, kind of one more thing.
Jessica.
Thank you. What I'm looking for is, I could, what most of the board members said. When somebody drives north and they pass that Bell Rowley Line, which is known as that line that crosses Lake Orient and Oxford, all the way north till they get to the pier, you know you're in Oxford. And what I mean by that is there's pride in being a wildcat. Whether you're homegrown, whether you moved here, whether you're school of choice, you are a wildcat. And that, again, trickles down to what Dale said. That goes from community members that have kids in, in the district across the board. Just so you know.
That's it. That's all we have for tonight. I have to thank you for all your time tonight, Carol. Appreciate you.
Hope you don't have too long to drive.
Meeting adjourned.